from Pacific Cove because we were relocating low-income people with that project. So that's the resources we have. The key housing projects that we have in the queue right now are obviously the housing element. We also have the rezones associated with the housing element, with the goal to try to get those done this year. We've been using some of these funds to support our regional contribution to the Housing for Health partnership. Those are the sheltering options that we do in partnership with the other cities and the county. And then, really, the key here is to seek partnerships with a nonprofit to develop an affordable housing project. And we have a number of preliminary irons in the fire, nothing that's ready sort of for public discussion yet at this stage, but those would be the big-ticket items that really, I think, would help and also would utilize some of these funds. And then lastly, the ECYP funding, it's the Early Youth Childhood Program funding. Council will recall this is a small carve-off of our hotel tax that we get, and it's restricted to supporting early childhood and youth programs in the city. Most of the funding is subscribed and is used to grants to nonprofits, but there is some funding available in this year's budget, we think about $37,000. Last year, we put $39,000 of ECYP funding into a multi-year scholarship fund for recreation. We also kicked off the swim lesson equity program that was designed to help folks become junior guard-ready, who might not traditionally be able to be junior guard-ready when it comes time for the junior guard season. And then also $2,000 for job skill programs for some of our younger instructors who work with the kids. So, with that, takes me to the end of the presentation. I think we're going to have robust conversation and questions about recommendations tonight or to confirm the high-level budget goals that Jim went over, confirm that the projects that we didn't do last year that we want to carry over into next year, and then identify the new goals and key projects for our next fiscal year. With that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Council questions? I can start. We can move back a couple slides to where in parentheses it says "resiliency fund," and it has the breakdown of, I think maybe one more, two, three, four back there. So, moving forward with the 4.8, are we generally saying that we're no longer going to, with the new expenditures, we're no longer going to be having a resiliency fund of 385 because we're kind of just, is that what the recommendation that you're presenting today is?
Yeah. At this point, what we're recommending is targeting a fund balance of 500K. You know, honestly, we can characterize it as a resiliency fund of 385 and then a $115,000 fund balance.
Yeah, that's, no, I don't think that's necessary. And then, one or two slides back about the projects, so we have the projects from last year, and so my question is, do we feel confident with the carryover of some of these projects? So, you've identified funding for the community center and some of these other things, but not any additional funding for these. And so, my question to you is, out of our 2022-23 goals, should we be thinking about funding any of these projects to completion before creating new projects?
That's a great question. Obviously, the biggest one on the list is the community center, because that does have a major allocation this year. I think, I think we're good. I mean, I think the City Hall option study is going to lead to more work.
Sure.
So that will need more money down the road, and that's part of the logic behind holding back that million bucks. I think we're good on these projects with the budget allocation that we have.
So the ones in red in your, in your color-coded graph, we don't need to worry about, but we can expect them to be completed?
Yeah, we can expect, you can expect to see hearings on those items, seeing them completed this next fiscal year. That's the goal.
Okay. So I'll just restate that we're confident with the 2022-23 goals, that we'll see those through, and then anything added today would be in addition to that. I just want, I'm playing it safe in terms of funding.
Yeah.
And any other future projects.
I think that's a fair characterization. I do think that, you know, in my experience, having done this, when we get to a year from now, we're doing this again, I would love to say that everything on this page, everything on this page, everything on this page, and everything here is done, it won't play out that way.
Sure.
Yeah, and that's the goal, and there will be some that, you know, just for whatever reason, aren't able to be done. And some of them are multi-year, but yes, that is.
Okay. And then, to the allocation for streets. So we have received in the past a breakdown of the costs associated with repaving of our streets and so forth. There, I put you on the spot to see if you have that information available to us so that we know what we're, what you're suggesting lines up to what actually the needs are.
Yes. I'm, there you go. So, Councilmember Brooks is referring to our pavement management plan, and this is from a presentation that was made to the council, I think it was maybe last spring, and it went through kind of a multi-year plan for what streets would be targeted and what time. The yellow line is light rehabilitation, and the orange line, which is a little harder to tell, is heavy rehabilitation. So the planned projects for fiscal year, this next fiscal year, we're going into was Capitola Road, basically from city limits to 41st Avenue. The plan for fiscal '24, next year, is some major work on Reposa and Lower 41st, as well as then the green streets you can see with light maintenance. So, the funding, the funding that I'd recommend could really do probably heavy work here, or it could do all the green work. And you don't need to make that decision at this time. We will have a more robust discussion during the budget cycle, but to give you a sort of a flavor of it, it would let us move forward from 2024, sort of half of this project.
Okay. Can you move to the slide where you are showing how you're going to utilize the 4.8, so that I can just make sure that makes sense, because I thought it was pretty specific? Okay. Pavement management at $350,000. And so that's what we said for Phase 2 was $350,000, when it was presented to us for the next phase. I just.
Well, it's going to be plus the 550.
Five, six, seven, eight, so nine. Five, six, seven, eight, so nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that would, when this project was planned, it was planned around $550,000, so we would.
And then moving forward. Okay, perfect. That makes sense. Those are all my questions. Thank you. Thank you.
I had a question about the Wharf grant. I've had folks come up to me and ask me about money that was allotted in the years past, and then they seem to say things were missing and money was spent elsewhere. I wonder if we could just outline that one more time. We went a little fast on it.
Yeah, so really quickly, Measure F funding has all gone towards council-directed Measure F projects. So we use the funding to renovate the jetty. We use the funding to renovate the flume, which is the concrete structure on the beach that conveys SoCal Creek under the beach in the summer. We use the funding, I believe, to help buy ourselves the loader. That's the loader we use to grade the beach. And we use a little bit of funding to help with some of the work that we did around Depot Hill, I believe, on the pathways around there. Does that sound right, Jim?
Yes. We also, we also put it towards law enforcement and police during COVID the first year.
Oh, we put a small portion, yes, that's right. We put some portion of Measure F towards maintaining our police department during the first year of COVID. All other funding for Measure F has gone into the Wharf. So at this point, between that funding, the state's contribution, we got 1.9 million from the state of California for the Wharf. I think we used the first 500K of that for, we replaced the piles at the end of the Wharf, if you'll remember. By the way, really glad Steve did that because I think the end of the Wharf would look as bad as the middle of the Wharf. All of that funding in Measure F and then the 3.5 million that's coming in from the federal government, that's all in the pot at this point. So at this point, we have about 275 extra, and so that's available for other projects. That's a lot of numbers. I know, I'm sorry.
But yes, we set it on the Wharf.
And we can.
Well, would you mind just giving like a brief, like what Measure F was intended for?
You know, interesting.
You were prepared. Thank you.
We came out all the questions that might come up. This is the actual measure for Measure F that the voters voted on. So you can read the language there up on the screen. It talks about protecting essential city services facilities, police and emergency safety programs, protecting the Wharf and beach, the storms, rising sea levels, parks, sidewalks, and bike lanes. So that's the actual Measure F language.
Without the question mark, because we're doing that.
Oh, that's true. That was the actual cut and paste from that. I think one thing that we can do, we've done this in the past, is we provided a pretty good Measure F, just a comprehensive Measure F accounting when we do the budget. So it sounds like it's probably worth doing that again as we present.
That's what I was just going to say. Typically do one to the fact during, when we kick off budget, and then I'll bring one to the full council.
And just to add that, it might be nice to add in what an actual measure means and how those create restricted dollars versus general fund dollars. I think the difference is very important for the community to know.
Yeah, that is, that is very important. And just to make sure that anyone listening today understands, the ECYP funding, which was restricted, it was passed by 66% of the voters, and it has to be used for youth and early childhood education. Measure F is a general tax. It can be used for general city purposes. There's obviously an intent baked into this, and that's what we're trying to live up with, the intent of what Measure F was intended to be for, but at the end of the day, it is general fund.
Great. I have a question or two. Go for it, yeah. Forgive me if you mentioned this, I was kind of trying to look through agenda and do some research while you were speaking to it at the same time. When you talk about the 200,000 to replace city vehicles with electric vehicles, does that include the charging infrastructure, or do we already have charging infrastructure?
That's a great question. So you remember that one of the projects that we highlighted last year, you put $20,000 into, was charging stations?
Yeah.
So right now, our goal is to use that 20,000 coupled with incentives that 3CE is offering to help build out some city fleet charging, and then also partnering with the public private partnership. This is kind of, that's more of a gleam in my eye of whether we're able to get there for more public charging stations. So we think at this point that we would have resource, we'd have resources to get charging stations to charge city fleet as we start to buy EVs.
Right, because.
Yeah, down the road, we may need more, but I think as a starting point, we're going to continue.
Okay, yeah, because the 20,000 we put aside last time was for public charging stations, and this would need to be like at the courtyard, right? For, for our.
That was my understanding, but I think.
Oh, interesting. I had, my recollection was that those, that 20,000 was.
I thought they were going to be in like the PACO parking lots, that, like.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
For the public. That, that was my understanding last year.
So we have some, right? In, in our parking lot, so I thought we identified actual spots in the village.
Yeah, I thought there were going to be public spaces somewhere. I don't know if I knew, thought they'd be here in the village, but public rather than city, city.
Vehicle.
Yes, public use vehicles.
Well, so in that case, we may need to talk a little bit further about it. My thinking had been, one of the lessons we've learned from the two charging stations we have in the city lot is that the city is not, we're not very expert in managing public charging stations. We haven't done a very great job of policing it, ensuring that people are actually paying for the electrons that they're using. And so the hope that we've had, we've actually had preliminary conversations with a couple of other cities that have tried this, is the city has, I think we have something like 1,500 parking spaces within, you know, a mile of where we're sitting right now, that if we can bring that to the table, that we can find a private sector partner that then says, okay, we provide the land, you guys provide the charging infrastructure, we have an agreement with them. So the hope would be that we could do that at no cost. And then the thinking was that the 20,000, this was my own mental vision, would help us get fleet charging coupled with the funding from 3CE, because I think that they'll contribute a fair amount for fleet charging as well. So that's the, that's been my tentative plan, but we can obviously adjust if we need to.
Okay. Okay, my other question. So I was actually, it's funny, when you mentioned the Hill and Bay Avenue intersection, I started thinking, what about the roundabout? And then I started looking up where the roundabout was and like the transportation plan with RTC, and then I heard you say something about the roundabout. So is that what that $1 million feature infrastructure project, is that what you were saying? It would go to something like that?
I think something like that is a fair characterization. You know, I'm not asking you to vote and decide, like, is it $1 million for the roundabout or is it $1 million for the playground or is it $1 million for City Hall, but there are, the community center, right? Those are a number of big-ticket items that are still sort of developing as projects. So that's my suggestion, is holding it aside for one of those things.
Okay. And then my last question, the affordable housing resources, I think especially now as we're moving into our housing element and there's lots of questions, can you just give kind of a brief overview of how we can use this money, what it's actually used for? Are we financing affordable housing? Are we giving it to developers? Like how are, how can we actually use this money?
That's a really great question. That's probably more technical than I can actually answer. I will, I will give you a high level, and then we'll see if our community development director wants, if you want to go into a deeper dive. So as I mentioned, each one of these funding streams is different, and that's just because they come from different places and they have different requirements about how you can and can't use them. Our housing trust, starting from the bottom, is the most flexible. That's our funding that we collect from inclusionary funding. It's really, we can use it to improve or help low-income individuals, improve low-income housing, or, or help low-income individuals with housing. The, then going back up to the top, because I'm very familiar with redevelopment housing funds, those include really specific restrictions, and usually what you do is you use those funds to partner with nonprofit developers, and you have to deed restrict rental housing, I believe it's for 55 years, specific requirements. The home reuse has some really weird requirements that Katie's told me about, and I don't remember all the details, and the PLHA funding is new, so I'm going to turn it over to Katie and see if you can help me with those.
Okay, so the home reuse, we, we can look at existing housing projects out there that need upgrades and assistance, so that's one thing we can use for home reuse. We can also, I believe, partner with the Santa Cruz Housing Authority in, in assisting with some like rental assistance or vouchers with home reuse. But I, I can come back with or send out a summary to you of exactly what home reuse is, because it's, it's very technical, but I think one thing we've looked at in the past is there are some projects around town that are outdated and could use some updating, and home reuse would be a great use of those funds. Another thing with home reuse is down payment assistance, but it is a needle in the haystack exercise of trying to find somebody that's low-income, that the home price is correct, that they can afford, and, but we could utilize it for down payment assistance. The PLHA, there's five categories that PLHA funding can be utilized for. One is for the regional efforts towards homelessness, and it's more of an immediate assistance. So we've talked about for the HAP using, or it's now no longer the HAP, but the regional housing efforts, we can utilize money towards that. Two other categories are towards ownership projects for affordable housing and then rental projects for affordable housing. So for our, our purposes and our, where we've dedicated money within our application for PLHA, and we just got the preliminary notice that our application has been approved, but we don't have a contract in place yet for that, for 181,000. But we put, we decided to put our money towards ownership units. We can always modify our application if there's a great rental project that comes through, but typically the city in the past has done ownership projects. And then there's two other buckets, and I want to say one is for infrastructure, and I'm not sure what the other is for, but I can bring back, actually, when we bring back the PLHA to adopt the receiving of the award, I can have a full summary on that for you. So if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Not to go off the rails here a little bit, but is that the funding, when you say towards affordable rental, excuse me, affordable ownership, is that the kind of funding that we helped with like the Bay Avenue senior?
So the Bay Avenue senior project utilized two sources of funding, if I remember correctly. We put in, I think it was around a million dollars of RDA funds, and then we put a chunk of home funding, I think, into it. So the Bay Avenue senior project was developed by a third-party nonprofit, and they came in and bought it from the Salvation Army, came through, they got together an entire funding package that included some city money as well as tax credits, and then ultimately built out the project. So, you know, I think in terms of thinking about these funds, there's a lot of different kinds of programs we can do, but I think maybe conceptualizing, we generally can make big allocations to partner with nonprofits to help build or renovate, as the Bay Avenue project was, older housing. And then the other kind of thing we can do is more of the program-type funding, and it's like, things like CAB, helping CAB out with the emergency housing assistance to keep people from being evicted. It is the Housing for Health contributions that Katie mentioned, where we help fund regional shelters. It's kind of like the money where you write the check every year, and you're helping people, but it's not building new stuff. So we have those kinds of things that we can fund with it, and then we also have the big-ticket items. When you get those, you know, nonprofit developer that wants to renovate an apartment complex and buy it, and how we can participate and help those projects along.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, Willie.
I have some questions for Katie before she's announced. Is that, is that okay?
No, yeah.
Katie, for, with these dollars, what's being proposed today is $100,000 for our housing program, which used to be 300,000, was general fund. Can any of these dollars be utilized for that program? And then that opens up more general fund for us.
For the housing element?
No, the.
Employee assistance.
The employee assistance. I don't believe these funds can be utilized, because these are tied to, for low income, and they would be restricted dollars in which with, if it was to, I think the, the only way it could qualify would be for the down payment assistance, but that person would have to qualify as low income. And exactly, there, there are so many technical aspects to that, that in my time here, we've had one successful down payment assistance program, application passed through our CDBG grant.
Yeah.
And we had that open for years. So it is a needle in the haystack. I think it'd be much more efficient to use the city program. We could, when that person comes in, we could see if, if what they're buying and their income would qualify.
I mean, and maybe, I think that might be where, I mean, we're talking about programs here and trying to think about opportunities. And before, Jamie, you go, the other point, the other question and something you said was about the rental assistance, and so we have a three-year grant, providing rental assistance for CAB currently, CAB, I think I'm getting the right one. But where we use our general fund to, to offer those grants, and again, I'm wondering why we're not, so I know we have our big grant for CAB, but then we, they came back and negotiated more rental assistance program dollars, and we pulled that out of general fund rather than somewhere here. And so I'm just wondering if that's an option to open more general fund dollars.
They, they come out of our housing fund. The CAB fund comes out of the special fund for housing. So this, the down payment assistance would be out of the general fund, because it, it really depends on whether or not the applicant would qualify for low income, and there's so many stipulations.
I know that it comes out, but I'm speaking more specifically to the grants that we allocated the three years, and maybe you can just come back with whether we can utilize any more of this for the three-year grant cycle that we've already approved in the future. And I think for the increase, for the recommendation that you're making on 100,000 for our employee, you know, could we build another sect, you know, build that in as an option for them to access these programs as well, or, because that just opened, that could open $200,000 in general fund, essentially, you know?
Yeah.
150,000 in general.
We'll definitely take a look at it. You know, I, I have a recollection that the housing trust has some specific rules that says that like employees can't take advantage of it, and so, but, but we'll take a look. Your point is well-taken, and that's actually something we try to do, we try to do every year, is is look through like, hey, for contributing money, because historically, actually, we paid the funding for the Housing for Health Sheltering Efforts, used to be called the HAP. We had to pay that out of the general fund, and some changes in redevelopment law led us to use redevelopment agency fund, and then more recently with the PLHA funding, our plan is to transition it there. So our goal is always to find these, but it's always good to look and check and see if there's an opportunity to utilize restricted funding rather than general fund.
Thank you. Sorry, Kristen, I don't know if that was your.
No, no. Yeah, I'm done for now.
I just have one question. With the City Hall Options Study, does that include the police department as well, or is that specifically City Hall?
It's both the police department and City Hall.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think I did have a couple of questions. This might be actually more infrastructure-wise, but the bollards, I noticed a lot of, that we still put out wooden barricades during the last like couple of events instead of using the bollards, or maybe I'm not seeing that correctly.
You're talking about the removable bollards?
Yeah.
So the removable bollards were actually purchased with a grant through the, it was through the county, and we got that a couple of years ago, but those are removable bollards. And so we've been utilizing those depending on the traffic flow.
Okay.
So if it's going to be like a lockdown event, because once we put them in place, they're, they're supposed to be locked up, so depending on the traffic flow.
Okay. Okay, and so they're, they're usable, they're in good shape? Okay, cool.
They're usable, and like I said, we've, that was, that was all funded on a different.
Okay, gotcha. And then I noticed one of my goals from the previous session, it, I think it was highlighted as green as completed, but I'm not sure what the status of that project is for the crosswalk at Esplanade and Stockton Bridge.
Yeah, that, that's not correct, because that, yeah, that project hasn't been completed. So I think that one should be orange, but let's, let's hear from our Public Works Director.
We have four of those on order, so they've been paid for.
Cool.
But have not been installed.
Okay, awesome.
So partially completed.
Okay, well, good. Good to know. I'm glad it's on the radar. That's awesome. And then, oh yeah, and then I was going to ask about charging stations, but we covered that. All right. So any public comment?
We do have one speaker on the screen.
Great.
Um, Valerie.
Welcome, Valerie. You can unmute yourself, and you have three minutes. Welcome Valerie, you can unmute yourself and you have three minutes. Got all excited. Okay, fine. Okay. So we'll take you back to council. Comments, deliberation?
Are we pulling up one of our fun?
Spreadsheets?
Spreadsheets.
Do you want to go full spreadsheet right now?
Spreadsheets.
We're going, we're going spreadsheet. Let's do it.
You're so predictable.
You are. You're prepared.
Here's a spreadsheet. I put it, put it together. I think I've got everything that was on that sheet before. That's right, starting with the debt payoff and then the projects listed out. So if council members want to weigh in on them, you can do it. Sometimes what we've done in the past is council members say, looks good, or I don't want to do, or let's move money.
You want to go item by item? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you know, it's kind of a council discretion, how you best want to move through it. But this is saved if you want to go through it each way, or if council members say, looks, looks fine, I would like to make two changes. That's whatever format works best.
All right.
But we're prepared to take notes and do math on the fly if necessary.
I'm good with going through each piece. Just piece it out, make it clear. Okay. So the debt payoff? Any comments?
I have a, just a general comment that I feel like. We're allocating nearly five million dollars. Me personally having seen this list of ten or so items just yesterday. And you know that five million dollars is not a small amount of money. I don't personally feel like we are dedicating an appropriate amount of time to this amount of allocation. I would love to see this list weeks in advance and have multiple meetings to discuss it.
So one thing that may help a little bit in that is, is that we're actually not making any final decision now. This is.
So we will have another meeting.
Yeah, we actually, that entire budget calendar is about discussing these things.
You have twenty more times.
Yeah, I thought this was, we're supposed to approve this right now.
You wish it was that easy. Setting of those idiots.
Mayor Kaiser, though, if I may, some of the items I want to propose today might force the other items to be reduced a little bit. And so I don't know that if we want to kind of, if you want to see what I'd like to propose, or if other, other council members want to propose other items, so then we know how to shift the shells, if you will, of dollar allocations.
Oh, because you think your points won't fall under?
Well, I definitely think that we should do some of these items, but my project, for something else that I want to allocate dollars, might lessen the EV vehicles or something like that. So I'm just wondering if, if council members would rather propose some of their items first, and then we can do the shell game of dollars.
Okay, yeah. That's fine. Do you want to start it off?
Let me pull out my fifteen page.
There we go.
And I actually have more. My first comment is about the twenty dollar allocation from the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three EV program that we wanted to, while that will be continuing to this year. I, I would ask if we can leverage those dollars to create that program, Jamie, that you were referring to, to create, find a partner. So it just seems like in a year since we've created that as a goal, we've recognized that we can't really manage EV stations and that we should maybe move in that direction. And with that being said, I'd also like to see if we could use those same dollars, the twenty-two, twenty-three dollars, to see how much it would cost to move one of those EV stations from the library to our dedicated spot. Because we've had a lot of library complaints about parking and so, and they're not all being used right, like as frequently as they could be if they were in another spot. So that actually might be cost saving.
How many are at the library?
I would say three.
Two, right?
Two?
Two or two?
Okay.
I think they're looking forward to what's in the future. There's going to be a lot more electric cars.
True.
Yeah. And so maybe we could put one on the sidewalk or look at other options. But right now parking is a hassle. I am sure council members have gotten all, a lot of complaints about. So just opening one more spot.
We could potentially leave the infrastructure there and open it up temporarily until demand for electric vehicle charging increases.
I love that, yeah. So not using more money, but just utilizing that twenty thousand, twenty thousand from last year. So. The other one I'd like to do is see an increase to our city council travel allowance to three thousand dollars per council member. There's an increase. Of League of Cities costs that, and we all like to attend those and some other increase, just we haven't done an increase to city council travel in a while. So I'd like to propose an increase and I don't know how much that would cost. For us to move up to three thousand per council member.
Wouldn't it be five grand?
Oh, thanks, guys. A year. Forever. You've actually touched on those. So the Dedicated Children's Fund, we had thirty-seven thousand. What I'd like to see is maybe some information from Parks and Rec to come back to us on the best way. So I saw there's some grants, or excuse me, scholarship funds. We did a two-year. I don't know how much of it was used, so I don't know whether we need more to maybe move the Dedicated Children's Fund to Parks and Rec. So I like that, for that information, just to come back to us, then I know how much we need to allocate more for scholarships. It was, if they were fully utilized and we need all that money again for scholarships or so forth. Yeah. I think there's one other thing, but I have to look at my other notes for that. Ideas, but more specifically for scholarships. In your report earlier, you said we had a two-year. Scholarship fund at thirty, thirty-nine thousand or something like that. And so I need to know whether you need it all again, or. We can use it for a new van, electric vehicle for them or something like that. This one doesn't cost money, but I'd love to add it as a goal or an intention of city council. And this is to adopt the Children's Bill of Rights. The county and the city of Santa Cruz has moved forward with that, but I'd love to get that in. And there's language from the city and from the county already. Ready to go. There's also, I didn't see anything about our climate action plan. I believe last year we talked about looking at our climate action plan. And I know we have new staff. On board. And so I'd love to see that continue into this year. And I believe what we said was that we've created a plan, we have goals, but we really haven't identified how to prioritize those goals and what projects we want to move forward with. So again, that's not going to really take funding, but I think it's worth mentioning again for council to at least know that I want to prioritize that into this new year. And I mention it only because you, staff mentioned it a lot today, that there's a lot of three CE funds that we can access. And it's almost like my own personal challenge to access as much as possible. Because those dollars come and go every year. And so I'd like to see what we need so then we can access those dollars. There is the, the MCR report that I can't remember what each word means from LAFCO, but they, you, you know what it is, don't you? Okay, what does it mean?
The MCR report, Municipal Service Review.
The Municipal Service Review was just completed for the city of Capitola from LAFCO. And one of the things that they mentioned was that, or suggested is that the city evaluate the sphere of influence. This is something that every city, I think it's in every city's plan. But it'd be great for us to look at that, especially with the mall development, mall redevelopment project taking place on forty-first and looking at what our options are, just in our general sphere of influence. And so to do such a study, I think we have to ask LAFCO about how much that costs, but I would say about twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand. That's just off the top of my head. Of fees, but that might just have to come back to us because I don't know how much. And then lastly, I actually did a really quick survey about programs for a gun buyback program. And there are other jurisdictions that have this set up and are looking for partnerships, but we have to allocate some dollars. And I think allocating, or starting with five thousand dollars to create a gun buyback program would be great for the city of Capitola to start with. And then leverage other communities or partners who might want to increase those.
Don't we do that already?
We don't have a gun buy.
Don't we partner with someone to do that already? Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's a good question.
It's a good program. So I know that the, that we have partnered with the Sheriff's Department in the past, and I don't know that we brought any actual funding forward, but I know that we definitely participated with the gun back, buyback program, the city, but the, the county chiefs does have, have a fund that we do. It's been a, a, a point of discussion in the, in recent meetings. And so I think with, if, if this is approved, there would be additional funding that would probably come from that chief's fund, which is part of the Sheriff's Department. But it was successful three or four years ago. To the point, I think we ran out of money.
Wow.
It was, I think it was like twenty thousand dollars and they went through it pretty quick.
Oh, cool. That's awesome. Yeah. Thank you.
And then the other information that I most recently received was about the, the inclusive playgrounds. We were looking, well, we're, we're partnering with the Parks, the nonprofit program. And we've had an RFP out, there's been some conversations about that. And they were looking at a very, like, if we want to make the best park, it would be like three million dollars or something crazy like that, which is a lot for a fundraiser to do. At a lower level, one point five, one million dollars is what they are anticipating in fundraising. And I think since we have some dollars. Allocated that one million dollars, what I like to see is for us to increase our, our promise to the program, our promise to creating that, so that the community can see that we're equally as invested. Especially because the fundraising ask is going to be more than what was expected from the board. The board meaning the, the Parks nonprofit board. So I'd like to ask for an additional two hundred thousand to be added. To the funds that we already allocated for in twenty-two, twenty-three. And I know that staff has said, well, we have the one million dollars, but I think that this is almost like getting ahead of it and allocating it today just makes it more feasible for the groups to move forward with them, what they, what they want to do.
Is this for Jade Street?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to add to that when you, when you finish.
Yeah, I think those are all. I have on that. All the others are. Oh, well, City Hall Phase Two is going to be part of the big, the leftover dollars. So I'll just, I think that was it. Okay, that's all I have.
Expanding on the Jade Street, I've, I've had a few people approach me to have an idea to do what they did at Shoreline Middle School, where they put turf in. If we're going to be doing the, the big upgrade at Jade Street, it'd be awesome to get turf in there so we can use the field year round, instead of having to wait till they reseeded and all the bad weather and everything. They had a really good outcome and success with getting a lot of fundraising for, for Shoreline Middle Schools through Lightwood School District. I think it'd be a great project to look into, to see what we can do.
Yeah, and I, and I believe that the project, when we see the design come forward from the RFP, which they're, I think we just got, I can't, I don't really, can't speak too much of it to it, but that the. The idea of inclusive development is to create like the spongy stuff that makes everything accessible for kids. And so that's actually, that, that would be part of the entire project.
Can I ask a question about that? When you say turf, are you talking about replacing the Jade Street field?
Grass.
Oh, not just the park.
I'm sorry, that has nothing to do with the playground. That's.
The soccer field itself.
So that wouldn't be part of the fundraising efforts?
I'd be concerned about environmental issues with replacing so much natural environment with plastic.
I've done studies on the, on the different turf things and. Weighing it out, the water use. There's quite a few things that, so.
So. The, the turf projects that I'm familiar with are, are shockingly expensive. Like over a million dollars. Not sure. Hopefully nobody's shooting lasers at me because I, I don't know that much about the projects. I'm looking back at Public Works Director, have you done a? No, okay. So none of us have done a turf project. I think they're really quite expensive. So I think if the council wanted that to be a long-term project, we would just have to go into it knowing that. I would also share with the council that previously we'd identified. A goal to try to partner with the school district to look at maybe an all-weather soccer field at New Brighton, and that maybe crossed over our property lines between our park and their middle school. And, and the goal was to get through the Jade Street negotiations and then pivot to talk about that. So that is something else that's been on our radar. We haven't really made any progress on it in a couple of years, but that would be one to talk, potentially to the school district about, you know, what are the opportunities there. So I don't want to dissuade council. I think that the, the, you know, the artificial turf, they have detractors and they have supporters. There's certainly the water benefits, there's certainly the year-round benefits, but they're, they're significant. They're significant undertaking. So if we want to put it in here, we just need to understand that either we're starting to save up for it, or we're going to do some studies to check on feasibility. I think those would be my suggestions if we were going to take the first step.
Would that be a conversation that needs to take place in partnership with the school district? First, before we even identify this as a goal?
Yeah, I mean, I think realistically, we would want to talk to the school district about either location, if we were going to partner at Monterey Park or at Jade Street. Because I guess Jade Street is their, their property.
Right, yeah.
How about?
I think that's.
I don't want to dissuade anyone from it, but I, what we could do, the follow-up here could be to reach out to talk to the district staff about.
I'd love to do that. I'll, I'll reach out to them and hopefully go to one of their meetings and.
Okay, so staff, staff can do that. Yeah, I'll, I'll put it in here and we'll report back during the budget cycle what that looks like.
Okay.
Do you have any other projects you want to add or anything?
Okay.
I just have a, a couple of comments. First, I, I'm, what really strikes me is the pavement management funding. I feel like every time it comes to us to work on a pavement management plan and work on streets, there are always people saying, what about this street? It's the worst. We never have enough money to do what we want to do. We're always trying to catch up. We're always trying to make sure that the bad streets don't become the worst streets and the worst streets kind of get put off a little bit longer every time. And I feel like that that's never, we're always kind of chasing that. We're, we're never catching it. And so I would recommend, when we look at the pavement management funding right now, we have three hundred and fifty. I would recommend that we bump that up to five hundred, to half a million, and remove that one hundred and fifty K from the one million in infrastructure hold. So that would leave us at like eight hundred and fifty infrastructure hold. And I actually am thinking that leaving the infrastructure, I'm calling it infrastructure hold, I don't know what else to call it right now. Leaving that at eight hundred thousand, and I'm trying to figure out where this other fifty K could go. But right now, my idea was to move two hundred thousand from that to put towards other projects, a hundred and fifty of it towards. Yeah, yep, to the pavement management program. I'm also thinking, when we're talking about just community improvements and renovations, and I was thinking about this the other day. Multiple years ago, we had some kind of. What do you call it? Plan, like an idea that's not really a plan yet. I can't remember what it's called. Yes, concept. There it is. That's the word, conceptual plan for Esplanade Park. And it had like the big canopy. Shade coverings and it had those medallion trees and all kinds of stuff. And I have no idea what happened with that. Is that anything that is anywhere in our planning ever again? Or would we need to start all from scratch? Is there any opportunity to put fifty thousand dollars towards it to do something? Or?
Well, first off, that point, you're exactly right. We did have like a conceptual plan prepared for Esplanade Park, for an Esplanade Park kind of renovation. You know, the way to get to these projects is, is you put funding in, right? I guess I'm trying to defend our Public Works Department here is, is that they have so much on their plate.
Of course.
I'm a little bit afraid of like putting too much, I mean, putting money into pavement management, that can get spent, that's not a problem. But putting money into another project like that, it probably wouldn't get spent next year. So you may want to just say, hey, I'm going to hold that in that infrastructure line. But that, that, yes, that is a project that's out there. We'd have to dust off the old plans and take a look and see what they look like and run it by. look like and run it by the council. I don't remember exactly what the details were, but that was a thing, that was something we did talk about a couple of years ago.
Could I, could I even lean in even further, because I like where Councilmember Brown's going with this. 'Cause I hear you though about, about bandwidth, but we have an arts and cultural commission with also funding a lot of it, and so much of it. I see people's faces, so much money. No, not really, but see, even if we allocate the suggested amount here, but get a match from the art and cultural fund, because there's a lot of that kind of design element that could be included, that simply if you dust off the plans, you can utilize that funding. So not even having to touch, we could tech, do the fifty thousand, but also giving arts and cultural a task, if you will, of utilizing their dollars that they currently have. I mean-
Would it be considered public art? 'Cause it-
Yeah, a big medall, what did you say, a medallion?
It's a medallion tree. The tree has big flowers that look like medallions.
Oh, that's not, but something else in that reference.
I was imagining of something else too.
I don't know, but perhaps we could use, I'm, I mean, it's just, I know that would be nice to have the arts and cultural after, you know, they've put so much work into the stairs, and there's just projects and art opportunity there, and I think this is maybe a perfect way to-
Collaborate. Can, can we for now, maybe the best route here for now, because I don't know if we're allowed to essentially tell arts and cultural, we're taking your budget for this, and I don't know if they wanna take it on. I know there's been other projects in the past where they're like, we don't wanna do this, which is fine. They, they have the right to decide their priorities, as we're doing now. But would it make sense for us to say, you know, let's reserve that fifty thousand for, I don't know, Esplanade Park improvements and just leave it at that, and then, you know, if bandwidth opens up, then we'll use it, if it doesn't, then come the next mid-year budget, you know, change, or if something breaks in Esplanade Park or something. But I'm thinking, you know, it's been a long time since we've considered improvements down there. And especially when you, I don't know if you all saw in the, was it the Capitola SoCal Times recently, Andy of the Brit was talking about how those concrete barriers out there, that those trees are in, essentially protected his restaurant from the waves. And so I'm thinking, if there's anything that we can do to make that park more resilient and more community-friendly and more beautiful, it's something that I would really like to put money towards, but I do understand the bandwidth of Public Works. But I just don't wanna let it go, because I feel like every time when we have ideas, if it's, if it's said, we probably won't spend that money this year, then every year, we're thinking, yeah, we probably won't spend it this year either, we probably won't spend it this year either, and then we're gonna end up in another situation like right now, where I'm saying, hey, that was five years ago that we came up with that conceptual plan for Esplanade Park, what are we gonna do with it? So, yeah.
I'm wondering if there's any way to incorporate like hazard mitigation funding with an Esplanade Park, like conception, conceptual design.
Okay, well, now I'm going down a whole other rabbit hole. 'Cause wasn't there talk about raising the seawall at some point?
That was the climate action from last year that we-
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's why I mentioned it here, is because essentially, we need to revisit that, and there's staff now. We didn't have staff to really take that bull by its horns, so I'm entrusting staff. But Kristen, to your point, I, I understand staff is in a data too, but this is up to us to move projects forward, and we're not really adding a lot of big projects, we're reserving dollars, so I'm behind you on, on, on this one for, for the Esplanade Park.
Okay, well, then let's just put it up there for, put it up there as that, fifty thousand set aside for Esplanade Park improvements as a goal for the year, for now. Is that fair?
I'm new to the art and cultural committee, but I, I'm pretty sure they would love to take it on, and-
Okay.
And we, we can take it to them and-
Okay.
Go from there and see, see what we can do.
Okay.
So one, one nuance about the art and cultural commission, definitely their funding is restricted, and it has to be for art designed by a professional artist. I don't remember all of the requirements, Nikki's nodding. So, they were actually involved in that conceptual plan, I think because, if I remember correctly, was that conceptual plan necessitated by the sea lions?
No, it was way before the sea lions.
Was it?
Yeah. It was like twenty sixteen or something.
I wasn't here for it, so.
All right.
It's up until before.
Yeah, but, but for sure, we can put money in, you know, to projects as long as there's the understanding that, you know, we're pretty, we're pretty tight. But you're exactly right, you know, you get to a fully funded project by starting funding, and the other reality is, is that there's been many times we've put money into projects and then we've reallocated it to priorities. So, it's not, it's not gone.
And then do we wanna clarify the actual amount that we have for the street repair? Because I feel like there was like the three hundred and fifty thousand plus that other five fifty, but if Vice Mayor Brown wants to add more, like, what's the actual number we're jumping off of for the streets?
So for time being, right now, I'm just sort of taking down all the different ideas, and then I can kind of recap, because there, I think-
I just mean what we started with in your presentation.
We started with, my recommendation was nine hundred K between the restricted streets funding and then the additional three fifty. If, if we went with Councilmember Brown's recommendation, that would increase the total to a million fifty.
And that was your idea, you think? Yeah, to, to keep the, the nine, what was it, nine hundred?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred, I think it was nine hundred.
Yeah, to keep us, yeah, to, that we would use anyways, for, that was already planned for, in for pavement management. And then the, what was left in this general fund balance right there was three hundred and fifty, and so my thought was to add an additional one fifty from general fund balance to make that an even five hundred thousand, and take that one fifty from the hold for major infrastructure proj, projects, and then another fifty for Esplanade Park, which would turn our major infrastructure projects down to eight hundred thousand. So that way, I'm trying to move money around rather than add money that we don't have yet, so like, it would keep our total four point eight or whatever.
Right.
But it would pull from other things.
I guess I'm just wondering like what that nine hundred, if, say we didn't add anything, where does that nine hundred get us? So maybe we don't need to, if we're looking at our problem streets, and then with, I, I guess we worked on it with Jesper, but-
Wasn't the idea that the additional funding would allow us to move some of the projects from twenty-four into twenty-three or something along those lines? So then that way, we'd essentially become a year ahead, yeah.
Okay.
And I think, and the idea with that was because that way, all the streets that are at risk of becoming really bad, we could stop them when they're bad, and then hopefully in the coming years, the ones that are already really bad, we can fix up instead of constantly just trying to keep things from getting worse.
I mean, in like the presentation too, the more money you throw at it up forward, the more money you save in the long run.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, and also, this year is unique because we have one-time funding.
Right.
So in a year from now, we might not be in a place with this kind of-
Yeah, yeah.
This, this extra funding that we have. So, I, I think it's smart, right, that we allocate, you get the projects done and then enter, and that could even save us a little bit more and open up more funding in the twenty-four, twenty-five year, which seems forever away.
Wonder, yeah, like how much money do we lose by putting this off? You know, like we're paying off the debt, that's a five percent, like are we gonna lose more money by not repairing the roads to a certain standard, you know? Like what's the most efficient use of our funds regarding it?
There's honest-
It's obviously complicated, but-
Yeah, it's a complicated question, and there's actually a school of thought that the smartest thing the city could do would be to go and borrow thirty million dollars and redo every single street today, and then only do story seals from here on out, because the story seals are so much more cost-effective.
So presumably.
Just nip everything you possibly can in the bud. Actually, the smartest thing to do would be to do every single street that is worth repairing, and then leave terrible streets alone, which of course would be politically infeasible and probably-
Revenue measure for thirty million dollars in street, of course.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think, I think if you talk to sort of the pavement experts, that's kind of the thing is like-
So, like the rate of interest is going to be lower than what we're costing to maintain these, how we're doing it in the long run.
I think in general that that's probably true. Honestly, one of the things that the former Public Works Director and I talked about at one point was, you know, could we do a half-cent sales tax for ten years and just do every single street? And we actually talked, we talked to council about that during possible ballot initiatives last year, and unfortunately, the cost for all of the streets was staggeringly high. It was like, it, it, well, I was hoping it was fifteen billion or something, and it was something like thirty, and we just don't see it. But yes, your thinking, your thinking is exactly right, that there is actually a mathematical formula, like the smartest thing to do is to rebuild all your streets, but mathematically, it's very difficult for most of us.
What, what's also not included here is where you're recommending we pay off our loan, and I don't know how much we pay a month on that loan, but essentially, that amount of money is gonna come back to us on a, I don't know if you pay monthly, or when I pay my bills bi-weekly, you know? So, I mean, essentially, there's gonna be more money coming back into us, and so even to your point, Alexander, like reinvesting that into these types of projects that we know have that kind of impact, might be smart. You do have that, our monthly payment?
Yeah, actually, so forty thousand dollar a year savings would be approximately the saving of paying off that loan. Couple caveats, though. One is, is the loan was a three and a quarter percent, so we're not actually saving quite that much. In addition, we've also used that housing, housing trust fund to pay some of it, so it isn't all sort of going to the general fund. So, you're absolutely right, paying off that loan would reduce our ongoing obligations moving forward. It's not a ton of money.
So it's already at the five point five?
It resets-
Just went up this year.
This year.
Okay.
That's why we're getting rid of it.
Forty thousand dollars a year. I mean, I guess like, how, if we spend a million dollars, for example, that million dollars hold for infrastructure, if we dedicated that to streets, like how many thousands of dollars would we be saving per year? Like, is that something that we can get calculated at some point in the future?
I think it's something we could work on. Yeah, I think that that's something we could try to present to the council.
It would be like reasonable to understand that in clear terms.
What you might even like is that spreadsheet that we had of the breakdown of year to year, and so by us covering the next two years today, then you'll have an idea of like what's left in terms of our projects, and then that's the calculation. But that would be really great to see of our, our projects and how they're, they're identified from worst to best, or whatever it is, and the costs associated. It's really helpful.
And we, we already did some of that, that we approved from last year, so we're already at least-
Ahead of the game.
The trajectory. Okay.
I have things, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I have, I have a handful of ideas. Some of them may be free, some of them may be able to take funding from elsewhere, and some of them may be appropriate to allocate some of this one-time, one-time funds for, sorry. So I have a couple things revolving around environmentalism that I am interested in pursuing, and I'm not sure if there's, that would be appropriate to take from these one-time funds or from some other pot. But one of them is to increase the number of public water fountains with the capability of filling up water bottles to reduce plastic use, single-use plastic. I'd like to promote the California Green Business Certification Program, which may or may not cost some, an unknown amount of money. I'm actually talking to them and probably will meet with them next week. The California Green Business Certification Program is statewide program that offers certification to businesses who meet a number of criteria regarding environmentalism, and it's a free program to businesses, and they actually offer rebates from time to time of up to five hundred dollars, I believe, for businesses that wanna spend that money to meet their qualifications. So it's a great program, they've done a lot of good work in our state. And I think like the county and City of Santa Cruz are already partnered with them, but I think it would, it would make a lot of sense to work with them to promote that in our city. I thought I had one more environmental thing, but maybe I'll come back to that if I find it. I'd like to have a mall redevelopment committee to make sure that we're working together with all interested parties, and actually community stakeholders and moving that project along. I think it's a really complicated project, and it should be one of our top priorities in the coming year. I don't expect that that should need any budget, but more of just a goal. And I'd also be interested in maybe dedicating some funding for programming at the community center during its, or after its redevelopment. Specifically, I'm interested in a makerspace. A makerspace is a place where people and maybe students can go to use tools and learn about advanced manufacturing techniques. So it's education, workforce development, and economic development, a space for communities that are really popular. I, I think it would be a great idea. But that would definitely require funding, I'm sure there's a lot of, or potentially grants out there that could help on that. And then another program I had in mind is an intergenerational program to connect the elderly to children. I think there's a lot of benefits out there for that, and a lot of really good examples of successful programs. So I just think if we're spending, you know, two million dollars renovating the community center, it would make sense to put some amount of money towards programming and to make sure that it's utilized to its full extent. And, oh, speaking of goals, yeah, I would be in favor of, and I don't know if this is also, wouldn't cost anything probably, but I would definitely be interested in spending more time looking at strategic goals, specifically in the greater than one year, like five, ten, fifteen-year strategic goals for the city, and just really maybe having some sessions as a city council to think about the direction that we want the city to go in in the long term. That's all. Yes.
To try to, so I think I, hopefully I've got him up on the screen here. Do, do you want some of these, do you wanna put a dollar figure at, at this stage associated with them, or do you want us?
Yeah, well, you know, like the public water fountains, I don't have a good idea of how much that would cost, or like what locations would be appropriate for that. I mean, the programming, maybe.
If, if I may, with like the makerspace, I'm just wondering, instead of putting a nut, amount, if we could dedicate staff time to seeking grants for, I know that the school districts have them, right? Have, and there's a lot of grant funding out there, so maybe dedicating staff time to inquiring about a grant and seeing how that goes, and then bringing back that.
Yeah.
And then the other thing I'm thinking of is for your inter-generation program to connect with youth leader, youth and elders and other, entire community members. That, I think once Nikki comes back to us with where they are with funding-wise, maybe if we do have some dedicated children's fund dollars, we can push that back to Parks and Rec, so like, explore that a little bit, if, if you'd be open to that. So, not necessarily putting dollars on those two items today, but staff time for the grants, and then a potential funding, funding support for Parks and Rec to look at some of the programs you're referring to.
I think it might make sense to allocate some funding specifically for materials for something along the lines of a makerspace or other programs, whether, you know, it be something else, like do we have money allocated for the community center to buy things other than infrastructure to support these programs?
Do you, do you have a timeline? I'm just thinking because we're in develop, we're
Yeah, it might be next year, right?
Maybe, yeah, and so if we find the grant funders, then we know we need X amount of more for next year, then we can allocate those dollars next year.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay. I'd be willing to support that.
Then I guess I have a follow-up, like about the mall redevelopment. I know, we're, are we just kind of sitting here waiting? I mean, that's the vibe I'm getting, so I don't know as much as-
That's why we should have a committee.
Well, and, and that's what I understand, but it's up to the developers to decide. I don't know if we can be beating down the doors of developers to, and maybe we can, I don't know.
I think we can definitely, there's steps to take to encourage developers.
Okay, well, then-
Require, I think that requires coming together with, you know, key stakeholders and making a plan to how, how exactly we wanna do that.
I think we could look into a committee. I think that the, I'll just sort of add level a little bit about committees, is it's usually good for committees to have a good purpose, right, and give them a clear charge, beginning, middle, and end. Sometimes you can form committees and they can have a lot of their own, and so that can be a little bit of kind of just open- that can be a little bit of kind of just, frankly, just take up staff time. The mall has been a hell of a project, and it's just, like, the pace at which it's happened has been incredibly frustrating to me. I know some council members are frustrated, I know my community development directors are frustrated. So, I mean, I think along those lines, if the council formed, uh, a, a committee and, and tried to put, like, a specific purpose and said, like, give us a report regarding feasible options to accelerate mall redevelopment within three months, I think that that could make some sense. I think opening the door to sort of a standing mall committee where we get together and we kind of just raise our hands and say, this is really frustrating.
I mean, I think part of the committee would be to have these very strategic goals and timelines and create those.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, yeah, that's why I love committees.
That's not weird at all. Well, and I think that we owe it to our new council members to even give them the, the space and the opportunity to learn more about all the work that's been put into it, and I don't know that you've been given that, um, and so I think it's, and maybe it's not even forming a committee quite yet today, but meeting with staff, talking about what that could look like, seeing how much more you need and who the stakeholders would be, 'cause I don't know what stakeholders you're envisioning. When we started this four years ago, at least for me, the stakeholders were very, were different, right? So, um, I think it's fair to say that coming up with some sort of plan and coming back to us with it, um, sometimes committees and ad hoc using different terms require different, um, like, brand act and, like, all that sort of stuff, um, so I, I don't know if you'd be open to working with staff and coming back to us on that, 'cause I, I could get behind that.
Yeah, I mean, we can come up with a plan for specific details of the committee, yeah, definitely.
Five thousand pages of reading for you, Alexander.
I've read a lot, yeah, and, and I have, I have met with a good amount of people and had a lot of discussions about the mall redevelopment, but, you know, gotta get together, gotta make it a regular thing.
I hear you.
Okay, so any of Alexander's points, are, are we looking at a dollar amount?
I was gonna ask specifically for the water fountains, do you have a dollar amount in mind for that?
Or have you?
Do you have a?
Have you talked to?
Anybody have a recommendation on that? I have, I've never purchased a water fountain at all.
Well, why don't we reach out to, um, Keep Sap- Sapa Cola? Keep Capitola Salty is, um, the nonprofit organization that the Capitola Beach Company has, and they're the, they're, that, their company is the one that installed the two latest ones that we have. So if they're willing to, they rece- the ten percent of the profits that they receive for that brand goes to environmental, like, additions or anything, m- mostly within the village, so they might be the people, they might have ten percent sitting there, ready to spend, and if we have ideas of where we want those water fountains, um, to go, that might be something that isn't necessarily coming out of our fund, but it's part of the vision of the environment.
A few years back, the foundation put one at New Brighton Middle School, and it was, I believe it was fifteen thousand for one.
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah, for one at the high, at the middle school.
If we, if the Art and Cultural Commission painted it, it would be a piece of art.
You remember Andy, the, the chief, excuse me?
Thousand to fifteen thousand?
Yeah, we, we put one in at New Brighton Middle School, and the foundation paid for it.
Could staff take a look at this and potential spots and prices and come back to council?
Yeah, we can come back.
That would be reasonable.
And identifying that, how many? That would be helpful, too.
Yeah, like, how many would be appropriate, locations and average pricing, and then we could just have a better idea of.
Monterey Park.
I mean, that could also be a fundraising thing, almost like the bench program or something, like, hey, do you wanna fund this water fountain and have your name on it?
I will note that we are describing the exact opposite of pavement management projects. Very full dollar figures with a lot of staff work associated with it.
I want my name on a water fountain.
I mean, these are little things.
We have no more.
I appreciate the enthusiasm, uh, and we'll take a look and see what we can find out. I, 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 I'm sure that there's options to replace water fountains and potential partnerships, um, it's just, that is the challenge, is that, like, those kinds of things often are, like, lower dollar figures and lots of, lots of work.
You know, you can't put a price on being environmentally friendly.
Exactly.
Or, uh, staff, staff hours number.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I wanna move, I wanna move numbers around when we're done. Are we ready? 'Cause I'm ready. This is my favorite card every year.
I feel like there's enough meat up there to start carving.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, Councilmember Brooks is asking for two hundred thousand to go towards the, uh, park. I would say move that from the one point eight five for the Community Center, and that would make the Community Center one point six five, so we're still keeping, keeping some money there.
You need a new call.
And then the two hundred thousand that we just moved would be for, towards the, um, inclusive playground.
Which will in turn be the fundraising.
That was one of the new things she added, and I'm, I'm trying to add the new things, but keep it within our budget.
Within four point eight.
Within four point eight, so that's what I'm doing, is trying to take everyone's ideas and put the money things in with the money things we already have, which is super technical way of saying that.
Just massage.
I'm just massaging, yes.
Oh, no. Oh, no. I don't mind, me, I'm just messing around here, and you guys can change as we go.
Okay, so then the pavement management would be five hundred thousand now? What else did I have in here? Oh, the, um, gun buyback program was like five thousand dollars, I think, and that's not a lot, so I would say put that into part of the, uh, police tech updates, so I don't know if you wanna consider that taking fi- five thousand away from police tech updates or just adding gun buyback to police tech updates, um, but essentially.
How many guns would?
What? How many guns?
She does, she telling you that is a separate, separate line item?
Does it need to be a separate line item?
You would take away from.
From the tech one? Okay, so whatever the tech one was, make it five less and add gun buyback.
Well, how many guns would that acquire?
Yeah, how much you, how much are we paying these people?
You know, I, I know, it did, it did.
I have a quick thing.
Oh, so, that's quite a few, okay.
That's quite a few off the street.
Actually, I was like, I heard like five hundred, seven hundred, and a thousand is like the, the general, and so I still think we got enough if we can leverage our partnerships.
Does that sound?
So wait, so you do wanna use five thousand, or you don't?
I, five thousand, I think, is a good start.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, uh, okay, so did you already, did you already reduce the tech updates by five?
Increase. Oh, yeah.
No, no, it reduced the tech updates by five and then in, and then add.
We added five thousand to it and.
For the gun buyback.
Included gun buyback.
Oh, just added five thousand to it. Okay, sure, for this, for that, this sake, that's fine. Um, uh, uh, fifty thousand for the Esplanade?
Yes.
Because we took eight hundred, uh, infr- infr- one million for infrastructure, now eight hundred thousand? Instead of a million?
Yes. Yeah, right there.
Yeah, sorry, that's eight hundred now. Um, I think a lot of Councilmember Peterson's ideas don't cost anything yet, as far as we can tell, but I think it's good to add them in the goals, right? Um, Councilmember Clark's idea about the field and the turf, um, super basic, not any detailed search, shows that there's a twenty twenty-three California turf rebate of up to twenty thousand dollars for commercial municipal projects, so maybe that's something worth looking into, even if we're not budgeting it right now, to look into, make it a goal to look into that, because I think he's right, for things like water savings and, um, whatnot, I think it's worth looking into, especially if we can get a rebate for it. Um, so I think the only things that we haven't included in terms of funding now to, to get us back to equilibrium for that four point eight is the LAFCO study and the five thousand dollars in increased council training. Am I right?
Is that thirty-five?
Oh.
That's not there yet, no.
So what am I missing? So we pulled the net over, we decreased this by two hundred K, twenty-five survey, this is increased by one fifty, like, down in assistance, this is increased by five.
So what? Oh, wait, because you added, oh, wait a minute, never mind. But how are we still over by that? Oh, no, yeah, we're under.
We have fifteen? Is that what she said? Is that the math?
Wait, so where does that fifteen come from?
Because I, I was reducing numbers as we added.
Four point eight, and then.
Yeah, we started with four point eight.
I mean.
Fifteen K for programming.
Hurts my brain.
So I'm just wondering if going over that, I mean, these aren't, four point eight is pretty, as we know, pretty rough numbers, as we say they're not.
Exactly, and so if we've just built that in and go over the four, four point eight by ten thousand dollars, is that the difference? 'Cause we know Jim's nodding his head, he's like, it really isn't technically four point eight on a day. We have fifteen, but we haven't increased the council training yet. That's not in there yet, so we had five there.
Or the LAFCO study?
And the LAFCO study is the other one.
Yeah, so just maybe pop.
So is that what you're suggesting that is to use, go over? So what happens if we add the LAFCO study?
LAFCO, what did you add it in as?
Twenty-five or thirty? And what's our total now? Four point eight, so we're over by what, twenty thousand?
That's probably close enough for, for goal setting. As we go through hearings, we're gonna refine all of these numbers, so.
Okay, that's pretty darn good.
Twenty thousand out of four point eight million, we're pretty much there. I have a question. What, what does it look like subtracting two hundred thousand dollars from the Community Center? Like, wha- how is that going to affect the project?
So, I mean, you know, we are still developing, we're still developing the Community Center project, so I can't say what would come out, um, at this stage.
There's always opportunity for budget modifications if need be, too, right? This is essentially like first step.
And to Alexander's point at the beginning, you know, what will happen next is you'll see the draft budget, and it'll include these things, and then we'll have multiple budget hearings, we'll have more refined numbers, we'll be able to revisit these here. The decision isn't made till you adopt the budget in June.
And, and, and if I may, Alexander, that projects like the one with, uh, um, at the park, similar to kind of like the library, is that when you have fundraising happen, some, generally speaking, more is fundraised, and so at the end of the day, the dollars that you see here that we've allocated of, let's say it was five hundred thousand, we get.
Get some of it back.
Gets back, yeah, um, but it's just more of like us saying, hey, we're.
This is what we're good for.
We're, yeah, um, and that's my hope, I think that there's enough, uh, commitment from the, the group that's decided to support us in the fundraising efforts to really try to get to that number and cover this, 'cause they understand this is a lot of money.
Could we, um, make a note for the, the EV vehicles? I know we got, 'cause, since we got our grant money right for the electric street sweeper.
Yes.
That was from three CE.
Our imaginary electric street sweeper.
Yeah, that's not here yet, but, um, it's coming, right?
Sounds pretty noisy.
You spent half a million dollars on it.
I know. So is that something, too, that maybe we could just either make note of, or something I'm, I'm thinking if, if it's, if other grant money comes available from three CE to help with us with more vehicles in that sense, and then that would, I guess, so we may not need our full two, or?
Well, I mean, we, so realistically, the two is kind of just a placeholder to sort of, I mean.
Start the process.
If we were to replace every single city vehicle tomorrow, we would spend three million dollars, right?
For sure, yeah.
And so we put, I think it's four hundred K or something into the, more into the equipment fund.
Right.
It's been less lately, about two hundred K.
Yeah, so this gets us a little bit more into there, so we can start sort of triggering that process faster. We are absolutely gonna try to utilize all the three CE money we can.
Okay.
And I know that our Public Works Director's participated in some of the calls about helping, 'cause they have programs.
Sorry.
We need new chairs also, can we add that to the budget?
Add another five million dollars to chairs.
That's funny, I'm, um, so, yeah, absolutely, we'll be utilizing all the.
Yeah, I just.
You know, that, that number, that number can be adjusted, too, as we move forward. So I think if this is the council's goal here, at this point, we have a plan.
Right.
Uh, and I think then we will come back with some additional information in the budget, we'll talk a bit about the turf project partnership with the school district, uh, we'll see if we can find out more information, I'm sure we can, about the water fountains, probably not initiating a, uh, adopt a water fountain program, just thinking about how much, how much work goes in around those. But I think, you know, we've done the partnership with the beach company, and we did a partnership.
If it wants one.
Maybe, maybe.
Um, and we also think we've partnered with the Community Foundation on some of these water, water fountains as well. So, there's certainly things we can work on and then come back during the budget, talk a little bit more, and then there's also the ECYP funds, and it sounds like there's some good ideas out there about the ECYP funds, which we can talk more about the budget.
And if you can add on, and again, it doesn't have to do with any exact dollars, but the projects that we're gonna allocate staff's time to in terms for grants, so, um, 'cause I think that's really important, that's how we got here today, right? What has been by applying for grants that we've never have gone for in the past. So I think it's just important that we continue to do that work and understanding that your staff time is limited, but we know that the outcome has benefited the city, so, um, uh, on a, on a larger scale, really trying to continue to do that, and, and if you can make sure that when you come back, you, you can say yes to the Makerspace, the water, the, you know, whatever, there, there was a lot of them, but, um, identifying those and, and the departments that are gonna be focusing on them, that'd be great.
Sure. All right, folks.
Okay. So is this enough direction? Are we feeling good about this? Great. Do, uh, do we need roll call for this, or is this just our direction?
It's really up to you. I, I think at this point, if councils, everyone is able.
We could just do a yay or nay? Yay. Voice vote. All aboard, all aboard.
Oh, yeah, I keep forgetting, we can do voice votes.
We can do voice votes now.
We don't have to do roll calls every time.
Yeah, it's true. Just for Jamie. I know you do. Um, okay, great. I'm not missing anything? No, item eight, adjournment. Good job, everybody.